...time, and you skipped out at the last minute.
Come up here. Come up here.
So, I guess, I'll introduce myself. I'm Ching Sun Chang. I'm just running for the open seat. And at the moment--
It's not-- It's not. I'm still in it.
Well, it is open in the sense that--
Yes, I will be going off the board, so--
But they do--
See what you're gonna have to put up with here, right?
I know, right?
Anyway, I'm welcome to the Board of Selectmen. I know you haven't been elected yet, but since you're running unopposed, something we have sorely amiss here at this point, so--
I--
So, good luck in your tenure here as selectman, and I hope you-- if you have any questions, feel free to contact any of us. I mean, it's not--
Yeah, just something you want to add?
Yeah, great.
All right. Good deal.
I'm Janet.
Yeah?
My guest for my pie, and I will give you my card, too.
And I'll give you my card, even though it's 'cause I'm trying to get rid of them.
Yeah. We could have enough to supply the rest of our lives.
Sure.
All right.
No, I'd actually like to sit down with each of you mentally, as well as maybe Steve and Tom.
You should talk to Ken. He's the most important one.
You know, just go over-- No, yeah, just, you know-- Can you both just-- I didn't have my card on because I was-- My present's away. Yeah, but I--
It's on the website.
All right. Anyway, thank you for coming up. Appreciate it.
No problem.
All right. Since I'm missing my gavel, someone stole the gavel. I'll call this meeting to order. Seeing the presence of a quorum, we will not have-- we won't have Peter Berry with us this evening. He's ill, so we'll have to mush on without him. As we do every Board of Selectmen meeting, we open up with citizens' concerns. Anything that's not on the agenda that people would like to speak to, please approach the microphone, and we'll hear what you have to say. All right. Seeing none. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. We continue to watch the skies as Boston creeps nearer and nearer to setting a winter snowfall record. I think we're 1.7 inches shy right now with about two weeks to go. The only reason why it would be good to set a new record is we could say it was a record-setting winter.
I'm okay not to.
Instead, it's just a season from hell, so-- But the boys of summer are warming up in preseason down in Florida, and spring is only 11 days away theoretically, so. It was nice to come to work tonight in the daylight, which is a first for a while. Coming up this Thursday, March 19th, the League of Women Voters will be holding a candidate's forum here in Room 204 at 6:30 PM, when people will actually get a chance to question the candidates on what their positions are on things, so please attend. Come see if you can ask any questions of the new candidates and stump them. Elections will be held Tuesday, March 31st, and please get out and vote. They appreciate it. And finally, this Thursday, we'll be honoring some employees with the Star Awards, which I may be stealing your thunder a little. You wanted me to just pass that off to you? You got that on you?
I didn't have my list.
Okay. Which is the Service to Town Act and Recognition Award. These awards are given out to employees who achieve milestone years of service. It's a recognition of their efforts to make this one of the best communities in Massachusetts. And now, I'll turn it over to Mr. Manager.
Thank you. It's interesting. I received an email from a resident who wanted me to post the official Acton snowfall for the season, and unfortunately, we don't go out and measure these things. We just plow them, so we don't have an actual snowfall count.
Wicked deep.
Definitely deep, right. First of all, I wanted to report to the Board. As you are aware, we've had some concern with the large increase with our Middlesex Retirement Assessment for FY16, almost 29 percent. I had written a letter to the Executive Director of Middlesex Retirement requesting some information under Freedom of Information and also requesting a meeting to go over some of our concerns. We will be meeting with representatives of Middlesex Retirement tomorrow morning at 9 o'clock. We have a meeting with the Executive Director and their actuary. Then at 10:30, there is a Middlesex Retirement Board meeting, which we've been invited to express our concerns. So, it's certainly hard to say and premature to predict how this will turn out, but they did respond rapidly to our inquiry, and hopefully we'll get some answers and perhaps some resolutions. Maybe not tomorrow.
How much more can they increase it?
By me?
How much more can they increase it?
Don't even ask that question. But hopefully, we may not get any resolution tomorrow, but hopefully, we'll be striving to see if we can get some before town meeting.
All right. Thank you.
Just also wanted to let the Board know that Lisa Kraus, our town accountant's father, passed away over end of last week. Longtime town resident, a builder in town, built Dean Charter's house, for example, and he was 91 years old. As many of you are aware, we had a forum on pay-as-you-throw smart recycling last Wednesday. Had about, I'm guessing, about 50 people in attendance. A lot of concern, at least from the seniors present, about whether it was equitable, whether it would cost them more money. Deputy Executive Director Cory York is gonna revisit the pricing system and see if there's some tweaking we could do on the senior side of it, and hopefully, there'll be more positive issues out of that once he has a chance to look at the data. I attended, a week or so ago, the annual meeting of the SMUR, the Central Middlesex Emergency Response Agency, that runs the advanced life support for all the community-- or most of the communities around here. The recommendation of the SMUR Board is on the agenda tonight in terms of a fee increase, and we'll talk about that then, but it'll be the first fee increase they've had in the five years that agency has been in existence. And finally, we had an ALG meeting about two weeks ago. I think we've all arrived at consensus, and all the various boards have reached agreement on issues revolving around budget and use of free cash, et cetera. So, the happy news is that the ALG meeting scheduled for this Thursday is canceled, so I think we all will appreciate that. And I think that concludes my report.
All right. Thank you very much. All right. Seeing that it's week past 7:10, we'll read the notice of public hearing. In accordance with Section 22 of Chapter 82 of the General Laws, notices hereby given by the selectmen of the town of Acton that they will meet at 7:10 PM in the Faulkner Room of the Acton Town Hall, 47 Main Street, on Monday, March 9, 2014--2015, for the purpose of laying out as a townway for acceptance by the town at the annual town meeting. The ways known as, in Ellsworth Village, Braybrook Road, 86 feet, more or less, prior to the previous limit of acceptance at the westerly end of Braybrook Road, a distance of 55 feet, more or less, in a generally northern direction to the southerly sideline of Ellsworth Village Road, this being the entire road. And with that, I am going to turn this over to Paul Campbell, who is here to inform us.
Good evening.
Good evening. You have to use a microphone, sorry, Paul. Otherwise, you rob our TV audience. There you go.
All right. Good evening. Paul Campbell, Engineering Department. So, I'm here to answer any questions you have. The purpose of this meeting is just to discuss the merits of accepting the roadway. A vote today to accept would push it to town meeting, to either accept or decline. A vote to decline, it would not get it to town meeting, so-- This is Braybrook Road. It's the first road off of Pope Road, coming from Great Road, and it's part of a senior special permit about 10 years ago, and they have a couple of construction issues outstanding, but there's a good-sized bond to cover the few things-- outstanding things that have to get done. So, I'm here for any questions, and I'll leave it to the Board and public to discuss the merits.
Okay. Janet, you might as well just stay.
Yeah. Paul, I think I understand where the road is going based on the various maps, including the overhead, but it's 251 linear feet going on this map. It-- you know, I know where Braybrook Road is, but it looks-- does it go-- it goes between the existing condo development? Is that where it pass-- I haven't been back there, so I don't know.
Yeah. It's-- the part that's gonna be accepted by the public stops at the turnaround. There used to be an emergency turnaround at the end of Braybrook before they built Ellsworth Village, so--
Okay.
They extended the road all the way back into Ellsworth Village, so Braybrook is actually gonna end right at the turnaround, and then the rest-- there's a-- it might be hard to see in the--
Is it in the red and closed part?
Yeah. It's in that lot, yeah.
Okay. Because I don't know if this gets cut off on the top. I don't know if there's anything beyond that.
Uh, no. Do you guys have the plan for any-- I have a full-size site plan.
Yeah, I can see that, but I'm just trying-- Yeah, I'm just-- well, I'm trying to-- you know, what I'm trying to do is consolidate this map with the overhead map, which is a dangerous thing, because I'm often geographically challenged, so-- but I wasn't sure how they came together.
So, help us with Jan's up.
That is this pond right there.
Okay.
So, Ellsworth Village, it's that piece and this that is gonna be accepted. Yeah, the old right-of-way end and down here.
This is the whole thing that goes between--
Where it's--
Right. Yeah. That's all gonna be private.
That's still gonna be private.
So, it's just--
It's just up to the--
This?
Yeah, it's just up--
Okay.
Just up to the turnaround.
Then you have to trust them not to plow everything down here.
Yeah.
Sorry.
Well, it's a public way. It's our problem, not theirs.
Well, yeah, but, you know, that would be something, yeah, if they don't wanna have to haul snow away. Just pull it there. So, how much does it cost roughly? Is there a price per linear foot for our service in plowing the public roads?
Yeah. Cory does have a number that he uses for the private way plowing. I don't know what it is offhand, but that number does exist. I can get that to you.
But it-- and one last question. The road obviously conforms with our requirements for public roads, so--
Yeah. You know, except for the few, you know, outstanding items that they have left to do.
Okay. That's it for me. Thanks.
Katie?
So, I was just wondering, because I don't know that I saw kind of the history of why this is coming up now. Is there something in particular that precipitated this, or?
Sure. They're almost done with construction out there, and it was part of the decision by the Planning Board, 2005, I believe. So, this is the process that we had-- they submitted the final ASB plan for us to inspect, and then you guys gave notice in January for this meeting, and then the Planning Board gave notice to you guys last month in February. And so, this is just the step to get it on track for the next town meeting.
Okay. Thank you.
You're good, friend. One question I've got, or comment, I guess, is the other portion of Braybrook is currently accepted as a town road. It is--
Yes.
This is just extending it this whatever-- however many feet?
Yeah. It was-- it ended where the old turnaround was, and this is just extended to the new turnaround.
Okay. Any more questions for Paul? I would entertain a motion.
Is it just a move to accept Braybrook Road? Or whatever? You know, move to accept the portion of Braybrook Road as listed in the public hearing notice as a public road?
Okay.
Second?
All right. We have Katie motion, and Janet second. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Go home, Paul, and take your paperwork with you. All right. Next up is the Acton-Boxborough Regional High School Budget Hearing, and whoever's gonna be on the warm seat-- because it's not really hot-- I'm sorry. We have a limit. And please be sure to turn on the microphone. Thank you, Steve. All right. Ladies and gentlemen, why don't you start by introducing yourself, even though we know who you are?
I was going to start with that. Thank you. My name's Christina Richlich. I'm the chairperson of the Acton-Boxborough Regional School Committee. To my left is Dennis Bruce, the Acton Vice Chair of the committee, and to my right is Dr. Glenn Brandt, Superintendent of Schools. I wanted to thank you for allowing us to come tonight to present our budget and respectfully ask for your approval of the Acton Assessment portion of our budget. I assume I just hit the arrow button. Great. A lot of this information I'm presenting tonight, you will have seen before, so I'll go through quickly. Back in December, our budget priorities were initially outlined. Central to those priorities are meeting the needs of all of our students while paying close attention to the fact that the student body is changing, and we're finding more and more students with special needs in terms of English language learners, students on IEPs, students with special mental health needs, and students in the low-income category. So, we have spoken, and people have talked a great deal about declining enrollment and how that impacts our budget. We are projecting a decline for next year of approximately 100 students, but it doesn't necessarily translate into a reduction of needs. There's always that pressure to reduce staffing because of declining enrollment, but the reality is that our demographics are changing, and that change requires additional resources in some areas, not just special-- but other areas I'll talk about. However, we do pay attention to the declining enrollment, and where we can, we reduce staff. So, our plan for next year is to reduce two classroom teachers, as well as some custodial services as well, a utility budget advisor, and the health insurance associated with those positions, for a total of three FTEs and $223,000 of salary. However, you'll see up here a 10-year trend summary of some of those high-needs areas that I have mentioned. The Acton-Boxborough Regional Special Education Parent Advisory Committee presented us earlier this year with a great report detailing these percentage changes of these categories of students. I would just like to point out the very last bullet that mentions students with single learning disabilities has declined. That's not actually quite the good news that it might sound like. The reality is that we have more students with multiple diagnoses, making them more complex to service. That leads us to this slide, which is a way of adding staff in targeted areas to meet these needs. A number of these areas, specifically the ELL teacher, the special ed teacher at the elementary level, and the elementary psychologist, are part of a multi-year plan of phasing in gradually, year by year, to meet the needs of our students over time. That's a total of 3.2 FTEs, or $214,000 of salary per year with the additional three health insurance. Part of the issue with our budget this year is that our funding sources are declining while the budget is rising. Taking those two things together makes it more difficult for the town, obviously. We are seeing a decline in state aid. We are planning to use less of our E&amp;D fund, our excess and deficiency fund, and we are not getting the Middlesex Retirement payment from the towns of Acton and Boxborough as we did last year. I'm going to really skip this FY16 funding sources. This is what we were expecting of some details about Chapter 70, regional bonus aid and regional transportation, but since this happened-- the governor's budget came out last week, and I wanted to spend more time on this particular slide, and I brought my backup, who can help explain it a little better than me. In the governor's budget that came out, there has been an elimination of the regional bonus aid. This is aid that we had expected and planned on over five years. It started at $139,000 last year. We are-- we were expecting to be in year two next year, and so, in our budget, we had $111,000 of this aid, which now we are not expecting to get. Chapter 70 funding is now being offered at $20 per student instead of the 25, with a negative impact of about $28,000. Our regional transportation aid, we have a little bit better estimate of what that will be, and there's an error in our current cherry sheet that's going to be revised. Circuit breaker reimbursement is not definite, but it's likely to be in the 66% to 68% range. In our budget, we have it at 68%, which I think is good, as opposed to having gone in at a higher assumption, we'd be in a more difficult situation. The net of all of these things, along with choice and charter, impact is about a negative As you know, we've spoken about it quite a bit. We have gradually been increasing our contributions to the LPEB trust fund, and we appreciate the Acton Leadership Group's support of our request earlier this year to take a slower increase, or a slower rate of increase, in this area. So, we have $700,000 in our FY16 budget, which is less than, I believe, we were expecting to have to do this year. We appreciate that. Our contributions to Middlesex County Retirement are also a major budget driver for us this year, although the recent reduction in assessment has been helpful to us. This covers a brief history of the past five years of budget increases for the region and for APS and the Boxborough Public Schools as well. It has not escaped me that the percentage increase we are asking for this year isn't the biggest number on the slide, and you'll probably notice that as well if you take a close look. But we do believe that it's for good reason, and it comes after many years of much lower increases, where our budgets have just gotten tighter over the years. Our E&amp;D history is shown. As you can see at the very bottom, it's currently at about $1.1 million. This is as our savings account for the district for emergencies. It's much lower probably than it should be, and hence, we are planning to use less of it in the FY16 budget. Briefly, for the last 10 years, both the region, Acton Public Schools and Boxborough Public Schools have had turnbacks most of those years. The regional turnbacks obviously went to our E&amp;D fund. APS went to Acton, and BPS went to Boxborough. The impact of our preliminary budget was initially a 4.89% increase, but both the Acton Leadership Group and the Boxborough Leadership Forum did express concern over that percentage increase. We added a special school committee meeting on February 12th, where we considered-- no, I'm sorry. We talked about cuts on-- now, I can't remember. On February 5th? No, February 5th was the date of the ALG meeting. We did add a special meeting on February 12th, where we had a detailed discussion of cuts to our budget and did vote to reduce the budget by approximately $447,000. The cuts that we agreed upon are on the next two slides. We turned them Level 1 and then Level 1.5. There are a couple of things that we were hoping to fund this year, that we still are hoping to fund, possibly by money from our community education programs, and that is cafeteria tables for the Parker-Damon Building and fixing the bleachers in the lower gym of the high school. We do have concerns about cutting our capital budget, because we don't believe that we have invested enough in that area anyway. The other thing to note is that now we have-- we are planning to do the capital plan-- The other thing to note is that now we have, we are planning to do the capital plan, the existing condition study, and now we have spread it over two years. So, the net of this process is our FY16 budget of $79,749,882 for a percentage change of 4.31% over FY15. Of that increase, 4.2% are made up of just four categories: salaries, then combined OPEB, middlesex, and health insurance, special ed tuitions and transportation, and that capital study that I mentioned. What this means for our two towns is in the form of our FY16 assessment. I did try to make these numbers bigger, but there's only so much I could do to get them all on one page.
Please don't make them bigger, they're large enough.
Okay. I guess I set myself up, right? I could go back and make them all a lot bigger. Anyway, you'll note, we do have the Acton percentage increase from FY15 to FY16 in here two ways, and that is if we take the increase from our budget without the middlesex payment from the town last year to this year's budget, it's a 7% increase. That said, are there any questions or comments?
So, thank you, I think I've heard this presentation, or a version of this presentation, about, you know, 15 times by now. So, I'm getting used to it. I wanted to start, I'll start with my positives. You know, first, I want to thank particularly Dr. Brandt and Claire Janet, who's not here tonight, for what I think was a tremendously more transparent and informative and collaborative budgeting process this year, and I think it really, you know, put you guys, started you off on the right foot for a new administration, and I look forward to that continued relationship. And I'd also like to thank the school committee for taking to heart the compromise that was made at ALG, and going back and making those cuts, and I know it was painful, and it was painful to make the cuts on our side as well, but I, you know, thank you for doing that. So, my biggest concern is going to be the one that you've heard from me before, that I don't like using the 4.3% numbers, and the six, what's down here is 6.2% increase in the budget, the FY16 budget for Acton, because, as you mentioned, if you wouldn't mind just going back a slide, so you can point to it, that it really is the 7.7% increase. And the way to make this slide bigger is to take out what's at the bottom, and I really do think that, no, I'm being serious, because I really do think that when you're presenting it at town meeting, what town meeting voted last year was that number up at the top, and so it's a 7% increase over that number. And, you know, a big part of what our concern with last year's budget was things like the middlesex retirement money is not, you know, we're not going to be subsidizing that next year, and so we said, you know, you're going to have to eat it, and presenting it, presenting your budget with sort of that deducted from or added to the FY15 base just hides that cost for two years. So, we don't think that that's fair or transparent to the towns, to the taxpayers in Acton. And so, again, I think this has been an extremely transparent budget process, and to keep it going that way, I would encourage you just to take out those bottom lines and talk about it as it is. It's a 7% increase over what people at town meeting voted last year. And then, you know, I think we've all been going through the governor's budget and figuring out what it means, and I would caution that, you know, I think seeing the regional bonus aid, bonus aid eliminated from that budget is obviously concerning, but I don't think it was in past year's budgets, and it's usually, or past year's governor's budgets, and it's usually not. It's very frequently something that's added, I would say most likely in the House budget. There are a couple communities that are receiving this, and I believe that Pat Haddad's district, one of the towns in her district, is still receiving the bonus aid, and she is like the Assistant House Majority Leader, I'm going to get her, no, she's Speaker pro town right now. So, she's a pretty powerful person, and this will very likely get added back in. It's just my political two cents. And then, you know, while I appreciate the slide on the turnbacks and the history of the turnbacks, I think it's worth noting that those turnbacks are no longer going to go back to the town unless you voted to reduce the regional assessments. So, that money will start going back into your E&amp;D, which is fine, and that's, you know, a helpful way to replenish your E&amp;D, which is now obviously, percentage-wise, quite a bit lower percent of your budget than it used to be, because your budget got a whole lot bigger. But just, you know, to note that I think that's a good history, but worth noting, if you're going to say that, that that's no longer going to be happening. And then, when you speak about the staffing reductions and the offset in the FTEs, well, I think the number for the staffing additions, the overall cost of them is lower this year than, than the positions that you're eliminating, those costs are only going to go up, and you were taking out people that were at their highest level, because a lot of these are retirements, or, you know, it's, you're not firing a teacher, you're just not filling a position, and you're adding in people that are going to be, you know, coming in at a lower level, and their costs are just going to keep going up. So, you know, adding staff is not like a capital expense, it's not a one-time, a one-time cost. So, anyways, you know, I will be supporting the budget tonight, and we can have a further discussion when we do our, talk about our recommendations for the warrant, but, you know, thank you for the presentation, and again, I think it was a good process. Just a couple notes, and I really do hope to see that last slide altered for town meeting. Thank you.
If you can cut it in half, it'd be lovely. Janet?
All right, I don't want to say just what she said, but I'll be somewhat briefer. I have talked with Katie about the same issue that she talked about, and if you can figure out a way to make it clear to that vast, really engaged town meeting audience what happened, without having their eyes glaze over, then more power to you. I think that a lot of the, I realize, sometimes I step back, and I realize that a lot of the discussion about percentage increases of the respective entities' budgets is of great concern to the entities, and really kind of lost on a lot of the town meeting public, because they just look at the bottom line and what their tax bills are going to look like. But the other thing I would like to say again, to reiterate what Katie has already said, is that I really, I was at Your Budget Saturday, and I thought it was, I haven't been to a lot of Budget Saturdays on the school side, but I thought it was just by far the most interesting and easy-to-follow process that I had been to to date, and I do appreciate your making an effort to try to cut back, share in the pain of cutting back on the preliminary budget, so, but that is all I have to say for now. Thank you.
Did Franny quit? What did you say to her? Takes a lot to tick her off. Franny, did you have something to add?
I have.
All right. I have one question for you. The elimination of the regional bonus aid, I know that was supposed to be a five-year plan, and I know that they're not doing it this year, but are they discontinuing it in the forward years, or is it likely that that will come back next year? Push the button.
I've not received word as to the intention going forward. There still is some hope that it might be added back in for next fiscal year, but currently, and the number is somewhere around between eight to 10 other districts, as I understand it, that are on this list, like Acton-Boxborough, that went into regionalization with the understanding that this funding support would be there. So, one step at a time, and then hopefully the next step is we might see some of this brought back online for next year.
Yeah, I mean, I'd like to advocate for it because of the fact that it's, otherwise it's like a bait and switch, you know? If you're regionalized, we'll give you this, and then, and then all of a sudden, you're regionalized, and then we're not going to give it to you.
I do, I do believe that the Massachusetts Association of Regional School Districts will begin to start to take some activity to that end, similar to the regional transportation aid, if there doesn't appear to be anything forthcoming.
And again, just to reiterate, it's not like regional transportation aid where the governor could cut it on his own. This is something that I do think will fairly likely be added, not come back next year, be added to the House's FY16 budget. So, you know, it is, you know, worth noting, but there are a lot of things the governor doesn't do, and the House really restarts the budgeting process with a blank slate. His is great, are great suggestions.
Yeah, and he's a new governor.
Right, and this is something that, again, I think if you looked historically, is really, hasn't been in gubernatorial budgets in the past, so I would expect to see it added in for FY16.
Okay, thank you. Yes, Franny?
I was back thinking about the increase in multiple learning disabilities, and is this a trend over a certain number of years, and have you presented that? I mean, I have, I don't remember, I saw, I mean, I don't think I did on Budget Saturday, but I would love to see how that has been in terms of a trend, and also how it is compared to other communities near us. I'm sort of curious.
I'm not sure specifically around the trend piece. The first part of your question in terms of this district, what I can tell you, though, is anecdotally, certainly from other surrounding communities, it's a clear understanding that these escalations, both in terms of students that are challenged with the issues that school systems are contending with, the rising costs is one that's shared, and an effort that I'll spearhead, we'll be on our way to try and put that into some sort of context. I know that there's an interest to try and, to align us with other districts, surrounding districts, in terms of a lot of different data points, and this is a fair one to have some insight in terms of where we might stand in comparison to other districts. But, you know, the reality for us, like so many others, is that our numbers are increasing to this end, the service delivery, not just within special education, as our chair said a moment ago, is something that we are grappling with, and there is an impact, of course, on services, and that plays itself out in different ways, but there is an impact.
Are there any other questions? The only other thing I'd like to say is, I appreciate the effort you guys put into this. I know this was a difficult year because of the 9C cuts and things like that, that the previous governor did mid-year, which nobody anticipated. I mean, we got hit by the same thing, so it was, we can appreciate how hard that is to do when you're trying to build, and you're building on sand, because you have no idea what your existing budget's going to be, or support is going to be. But I really appreciate the effort you guys put into it this year. It was, if this is the way it'll be going forward, I think that's going to be a good thing. I think it'll be much easier, and be able to face town meeting with a smile. But, so, I'm in support of it. Looks like the FinCom wants to weigh in.
I should say Herman Kabokoff, 27, Robinwood. The FinCom did meet last week, and it was an extra meeting that was put on the calendar, and I personally had a prior commitment I couldn't get out of, so I wasn't there, but I did look and note, I will note that the FinCom did support this budget. And, you know, I can say on the outset, as now speaking as a citizen, that I personally don't envy the job we had facing you, given the pressures. I, however, would suggest two things. Number one, if you could, in your presentation to town meeting, give some sort of a prediction, a forecast, if you will, with regard to next year, at least one year, that would be helpful, because you can justify the 7%, and I agree with Katie and the other selectmen, that's the number you should be putting before town meeting, and if you don't, maybe some will. So, you can justify that. It wasn't easy to get to 7%. So, but, you know, 7% on 7% on 7%, you're talking about some pretty significant increases, and if you can allay that fear that would come into people's minds, you're looking at one of them, that would be helpful. You know, it might calm some people down. You know, I don't need to give you the speech about the CPI being 1.6 last year. If you took a straw vote, and said, anybody in this room that got 7% or more of a pay increase last year, raise your hand, I don't think you'd get many raised hands. And yet, you're asking the citizens, in effect, to increase their taxes by an embedded rate that's 7%. So, if you can allay the fears that this is not going to be what we expect will be the case in the future, again, you might, you might just allay some of those fears and get a better reception. Just an opinion.
Thank you, Herman. If we don't have any other questions, I want to thank you guys for coming in and doing this one more time.
Thanks for having us.
Good practice opportunity for town meeting, huh?
I'm not going to do the same old thing for town meeting. Come on, it's got to be new. But thank you for your comments and concerns from everyone. Have a good rest of your meeting.
All right. Next item up on the agenda.
Dennis will vote when we do our whole, we've got later on, we're doing our warrant recommendations, yeah.
What's that?
He wants to vote on it.
Would you want a special vote?
Stick around for another.
Don't worry, don't worry, we wouldn't change our mind in the space of a few minutes. We're vapid, but not that bad. All right. Moving on to the next item on the agenda is the Town Manager's Review. And I don't know whether people have had an opportunity, obviously, the way this thing is structured.
Does he get a copy?
He better have gotten a copy. Yes, you didn't?
Did you get a copy? Do you want, do you, do you, do you, do you, do you, do you? Yeah, it helps me because otherwise it's.
Trust us, it's good. Oh, wait a minute. All right. To be honest, I can't remember how we ended up actually conducting this last year. I know you have an opportunity to read through it, and included in it is all of the selectmen's ratings and comments for each one. I could go across, after people read it, I could go across and give the ratings. I don't want to read the entire document, I don't think that that's feasible.
It's my recollection that, well, because I had to do this for two years running, for reasons I won't go into, but anyhow, it's my recollection that we basically, he, we all get to read each other's comments and ratings, and basically, we vote to approve this collectively, and he can mull over all five evaluations at his leisure. And then, we use this to just, you know, to deal with the more serious part, which is the contract extension and changes.
And the contract extension, we'll be doing, we're trying to coordinate a date where we can have an executive session to conduct that. I was going to do it at the beginning of next meeting, but we need to have Mary Ann Fleckner there, and she wasn't available, so I'm going to be reaching out to people to try to get a different date. I don't think it will be a long meeting, a half hour at the most. And one question I have is, since you actually are working a day job here, Katie, is there a time that is better for you that we could target?
At 7:00 PM or like 7:30 AM, if you're talking big days?
So, so, seven's, anything with a seven, and it sounds good, right?
Seven, yeah.
All right, we'll, we'll see what we can do in terms of scheduling around that, but Mary Ann will be sending you out kind of a, I'll call it a doodle poll, to see what your availability is, so we can schedule something.
I'm looking at this, I'm realizing that this is, I don't remember we ranked by factors, but anyhow, I was looking, I thought, God, there are an awful lot of categories, and I realized that the second list is a repeat of the first only, in order of ranking or rating, so, you know.
No, no, it's different items.
Yeah, yeah, no, but I realize that the, yeah, the second and the first charts are the same, are basically the same, but it's, yeah, which helps, I thought, gosh, I don't remember reading this. Which helps, I thought, gosh, I don't remember reading this.
Do you move to approve, I guess, the overall compilation and evaluation for whatever the past year?
Second.
Was that a second?
Yep.
Okay, so we had Janet moved and Katie second. Any discussion?
Can you tell we're in a hurry? Now, when I think about two years ago, the way it was done, every person had a performance evaluation, and then we had to spend time talking about a consensus statement for each section. You know, this is why we have this. It's so much better.
It's all relative. All right, no more discussion. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right, thank you, Steve. We'll see how that translates to money soon. All right, review town warrant and recommendations. All right, I guess the way we want to do this is to go warrant article by warrant article, and as you can tell from page, what is it, four? It's the one that shows the matrix of recommend, not recommend. Well, I mean, there's a page actually in here, yes. It's page eighteen. So, one of them, we will be going article by article, and we either recommend, the board recommends passage at town meeting, not recommend, the board does not recommend passage by town meeting, deferred, a recommendation will be made by this board when the article is considered at town meeting, or no recommendation, the board voted to make no specific recommendation to town meeting. That often will happen with a citizens petition or something like that, that we have no status on, so. Anyway, we begin at the, yes, you had a question?
Do you just also want to say, if we come to any, and there are people in the audience, instead of asking for each one, if there's anybody in the audience that wants to speak to a specific one, when we get to it, just jump up early on, so we know, instead of...
Pausing.
Oh, I suppose. We could be the pause that refreshes. I just don't want this to take two nights. Well, yeah, so if anyone has any issues with any of the line ends, please, you've got to be, you've got to be quick on the draw here, or we're going to move on. All right? Good enough? Okay, so very first one is Article One, choose town officers.
Move to recommend.
Okay.
Second.
All right, we have Katie recommend, I mean, Katie moved and Franny second. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right, Article Two, hear and accept reports.
Move to recommend.
Second.
And ditto. Any, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right, budget transfers.
I would recommend to take, defer till town meeting. We don't anticipate any, but there's nothing to take action on at the moment.
Okay. So, the recommendation by the town manager is to defer the decision?
Move to defer. Second.
Okay. Janet, move to defer. Katie, second. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? So, that's deferred. All right. Article Four.
Move to...
I'll have a lease read.
I'm signed. Sorry.
Trying to get ahead of the curve. Adopt local option meals excise tax.
Move to recommend.
Second.
All right, we have Franny moved and Janet second. One of the ladies said to end. All right, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right, so that's a recommend. All right, Article Five, town operating budget.
Move to recommend.
Second.
All right, Janet, Katie. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions?
And just with a note to Steve again, for, you know, thanking his team for putting together a very good budget this year.
Don't go off script.
Oh, and I think on my script, I also wanted to thank the ALG, the Acton Leadership Group, because this and the school budget...
I'd like to thank my mother.
And my...
Oh, yeah, this is not an award ceremony. All right, Article Six, Acton Bronx for a Regional School District Assessment.
I'll move to recommend. Second.
All right, so we have Katie move and Janet second.
So, I do want to have just quick comments.
Do you want a drum roll or something? All those in favor, please indicate by...
I didn't want to have a, just quick comments on it. I know we talked about it earlier, but just to reiterate, I think it's, you know, it's a bit, while I'm recommending the budget, and I think that there is a lot of good work put into it, and it was very transparent, I am concerned about the ongoing large increases year over year in the budget, so I think we just need to acknowledge that. And, you know, if anybody has, I'll be writing a recommendation, so if anybody else has comments specifically, speak now or email them to me.
Okay. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions?
Oh, you're good.
All right, Article Seven, stabilization fund.
And this, I think, we need to discuss a little bit. As the board is aware, I had recommended $2 million be placed in the stabilization fund. Finance Committee has recommended $400,000 in kind of an operational stabilization fund, and $400,000 in capital. My vision and rationale for the two million was, one, we have, we know at least two major projects are going to be coming up, being a senior center, a north Acton fire. By putting, you know, some significant money in the stabilization, that could help fund design. For example, you only can borrow money for five years for design, so this could help offset some of that. Also, probably in the next two to three months, we'll be seeing the results of our study that we commissioned to look at all our town buildings and the condition of the infrastructures, the heating, you know, et cetera, and we'll be seeing that result. So, you know, we have about $10 million in reserves. You know, my view was, $2 million really didn't damage our reserve position, because really, when you think about it, stabilization is a reserve, it's just a little more protected.
Hard to get at.
Right. So, you also have at your place tonight, the study that the finance department put together that chose all the AAA communities in Massachusetts, starting in FY11, going right up to FY15, what their size of their budget is, how much they have in stabilization. And as you can see, the majority have pretty healthy stabilization funds, anywhere from 15 million, 15 million in Lexington, to 3.6 million in Bedford, to 4 million in Sudbury, and if you notice, we have zero. So, putting $2 million in is, you know, kind of middle of the pack with what a lot of these other AAA communities have done. You know, I think the good news is since both, I have recommended putting money in stabilization, and Finance Committee, we're in agreement, it's just a question of the magnitude and what the most prudent approach is. So, you know, it really kind of comes down to the board being the, kind of the referee and making the recommendation on it, so to speak.
Yes, Kay.
I think, so I appreciate this info. I think the column that's missing from here is what the other towns' reserve amount is, right? I mean, this makes it look like we don't have any money put aside. We do have quite a bit of money in reserves, it's just not in stabilization. So, are there towns that, you know, have all of their money, I would imagine that this is most of Lexington's money, is in stabilization, and that they wouldn't have any in reserves? I don't know, I mean...
I mean, I don't know that per se. I know that when Moody's and Standard and Coors, you know, look at ratings, they do like to see about 10% in reserves, but granted, stabilization would count as a reserve, so...
Right. So, I think seeing, you know what I mean, I think seeing that, because if there are some towns that are putting all their money into stabilization and none in reserves, then, you know, this doesn't, I think, show the whole picture. So, that would be helpful, and then, I mean, I don't feel incredibly strongly about the 400,000 versus the 2 million.
Yes, Janet.
Well, I take some responsibility for the fact that the town manager is talking about this at all, because I sat in on the FinCon meeting, and they had some discussion about the stabilization allocation of 2 million, and I don't know how it works in other communities, but I sort of got the sense that when you have a stabilization fund, there's usually sort of some sort of proposal that lays out why the money's being set aside, and then, and, you know, I didn't know if there's going to be a question at town meeting about why such a big chunk right now, as opposed to next year, or what, or if you need to have a more detailed plan at all in order to set money aside. That was, you know, I would, as, you know, I'm fine with a stabilization fund, I'm all for setting money aside, but I just didn't know whether some of these towns have sort of a five-year plan or something that they've laid out to the town, the town residents, and that people understand. I think in Arlington, they have some sort of, they have a capital budget, they've had this exhaustive capital planning system, and they just, every year, they set aside a big chunk of money, but they've got this detailed plan that the townspeople are familiar with, so they know what it's for in any given year, or going to, going toward in any given year. And I just didn't know if this is just another, sort of another collection of money for unspecified purpose. I mean, the good thing about it is that I think there was some discussion at FinCon about how, well, it's a little less accessible, but it's still, the town meeting can vote it out with a two-thirds vote. It's not as if it's locked in there forever. It can come out if it has to. But I think it would be helpful to sort of, for us as selectmen certainly, and town staff to kind of start fleshing out what the plans are for the fund. I, you know, it's just very general, oh, we're going to take 2 million, stick it in this fund.
Well, I think I just said, I mean, we've got two major projects coming up.
But we don't know if they're going to go anywhere.
Well, but we do have two study committees, and I think one has to assume sooner or later we will have to deal with these issues. I mean, we can't ignore them, you know, forever. Plus, you know, you may recall from some of the capital requests we saw, there are a lot of building infrastructure issues out there, just HVAC and the three fire stations is significant, and, you know, once this study is done, we'll have a better sense of that, but, you know, we can't ignore some of these things forever, and that is kind of why stabilization funds are there.
Well, that I like. I mean, I, because I, we've been talking about those capitals, those repairs and overhauls for quite a while, so, I mean, those are really good reasons for justification. I feel more comfortable about those justifications than I do about sort of the perennial fire station and the perennial senior center projects, which seem to keep showing up and getting pushed back. But anyhow, but I, you know, I generally, in concept, I support stabilization fund. I just thought, in case people ask questions about what it's for, just, you know, that's fine.
Franny?
I would like to go with Steve's advice on this.
Oh, okay. The touch you meant like right now.
Oh, no, no, I mean, the 2 million...
Yeah, so you're talking about, go with the 2 million.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm not sure what the actual number is. I'm less concerned about how much we move in, simply because we're moving from one pocket to the other. We're not actually losing anything. In fact, if anything, by moving it in there, it makes it more difficult to spend it down without two-thirds town meeting vote, which can be daunting if you don't have the right mix, so. It's, by Steve's sense that $2 million is the right number, it's actually detrimental to him in having the flexibility, because the bar for getting money out of just reserves at town meeting is only a majority. So, it's, he's creating more of a problem for himself by putting more of the reserves into the stabilization fund, but I think his reasoning behind it is good. I think that we do have these projects, and it would be very easy if the rest of the, you know, if all of a sudden our OPEB number comes back and they say, we have to put $5 million into OPEB, well, it would be nice to make sure that we couldn't touch the stabilization fund, that it was earmarked specifically for capital. For the purposes of people in the audience, typically, the state DOR recommends 5% in terms of coverage, and we're higher than that right now, we're considerably higher. So, I am, I'm satisfied with the 2 million. If he's comfortable with it, I don't have a problem in supporting that, so.
Yeah, one of the interesting things, and I think, once, no matter what the amount is, if we use it, we have to have a strategy to replenish it. And what's interesting in this analysis, if you kind of look at Bedford, in, I think, 2013, it looks like they spent down about $600,000, and then in 14, they put $1 million back into it. So, you know, clearly, they've had a strategy, okay, if you spend it, you need to have a strategy to build it back up again.
Yes, and the other thing is, this requires a two-thirds vote to get money out, but it also requires a two-thirds vote to put money in. So, it ultimately puts it in the hands of the town meeting voters, which is really what we want to do. They're the ones who should direct it, so. Anyway, so do I have a motion on the floor on this, or do we need more discussion, or...
Move to recommend. Second.
Okay, Janet recommended, and at the $2 million, is that...
Yep. Yes.
Okay, I just want to make sure. We talked around a lot of numbers. All right, any more discussion? All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions?
And could you ask the other Steve to just fill out that reserve column as well, just for... Yeah, I think that just gives a bigger...
Yeah, made a note.
That was interesting. It might be. It's in here, it's all together.
All right, Article Eight, stabilization fund. Great concept.
Well, this, just maybe to refresh the board, as DOR has ruled that they, in terms of setting money aside for capital in a sewer enterprise fund, they would like to see some of the surplus, some of the free cash, so to speak, in the sewer fund be put in a stabilization fund. Same rules apply, obviously, just for sewer use. It was our recommendation that 1,700,000 of the sewer surplus be put into the stabilization fund, and...
A 1,700,000 or a 1,600,000?
I thought it was 1,700,000. Hang on a second.
Okay. In the summary of that article, it says 1,700,000.
Okay, I'm going off of memory, which is always a bad thing.
Okay.
And, you know, once again, you know, the sewer system is around 15 years old, so sooner or later, things are going to have to get replaced.
Move to recommend.
Second.
Okay, we had a motion by Katie, second by Franny. Any more discussion? All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right. Article Nine, capital infrastructure and equipment.
Now, this is, we took the liberty, and this is worth some discussion right now, of taking the painting of Town Hall out of this budget at 150,000. And primary reason is, regardless of what happens with our endeavors with Middlesex Retirement tomorrow, you know, we're pretty confident we're going to have to pay more than last year, for sure. So, you know, our sense was, well, this is a project that has been talked about, we may have some other alternative means of doing it. For example, when the Concord Muse Project was being planned, we negotiated some impact mitigation from the developer, and in that mitigation, 150,000 was given to the Board of Selectment as discretionary funds to use, as the board deemed fit. So, clearly, that could fall into this. We could postpone this project to a fall town meeting, when we know where we're at with Middlesex, and maybe we can reimburse ourselves, or maybe even look into your spending this year, although with snow and ice being what it is, I'm not overly optimistic with that. So, we have several options. I just felt that, you know, once it's appropriated, the money's going to be there, and it'd be very difficult to access it if we need it for retirement system. So, that is why we only really have two projects in here, the natural resource truck replacement and the accessibility project for the cemetery service building, which is split 50-50 between the town and one of the cemetery trust funds.
You are so lucky, Mike.
Why?
It's easy, you have to do the capital budget.
I get to a lot of them, so. You're right, it is easier than in past years, well...
Well, last year, I was twisting an idea we could call. Anyhow, move to recommend.
Second.
All right, we have Janet recommend and Katie second. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions?
Should we defer?
So, just before we go, just a point of clarification on painting, is that something the board, maybe the next meeting, would like to discuss in terms of discretionary fund, or is the sense we hold off to special town meeting, or look at into your spending? Would the board like to...
She could get a non-binding resolution about the color scheme.
Our Finance Committee loves the colors, Andrew.
I don't mind holding off a little.
How about a pilot program? Paint in lieu of taxes.
Any color you want. It would have the little rainbow.
It would be welcoming, it'd be diverse, multiple colors, you know?
The colors of Benetton.
I think maybe let's just hold off and see how a few more things are playing out and deal with it later.
Yeah, my sense is to put it off, it's, I know we did repairs, replacement, and repainted as necessary. The entire thing should not be put off too long, but I think, to your point, we'll know better what the new governor is doing, you know, come the end of the fiscal year, so it'll be a different animal. We still have that option open to us, as you said, if we have a fall town meeting.
And what the hot colors are, too.
Yeah. It can go white, off-white, bone.
No, they did that whole test.
Sand, yeah.
Sand, yeah.
Sort of, yeah. So, should the next three be deferred?
All right.
Yes, I mean, we have just really just started bargaining with these three unions, so I'd be very surprised, but I figured, well, just in case lightning strikes, we would be there. We do have a fourth union, that being the Teamsters that represent the dispatch, but we don't even have our first session with them till like two weeks after town meeting, so that's why that article's not there.
Well, move to defer Articles 10, 11, and 12. Second.
All right, we have Janet made motion and Katie second. We'll do all three together, since it's essentially the same issue. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right, moving right along. Minnetonka Regional School District Assessment, Article 13.
Move to recommend.
Second.
Okay, we had Katie moved and Janet second. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right, Article 14, which is a consent article, septic disposal enterprise budget.
Move to recommend.
Second.
All right, we had Katie moved and Janet second. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right, sewer enterprise budget, also a consent item.
Just to make the board, as a refresher, there are two capital items in this. One is a sewer equipment replacement for 60,000, and then a preliminary west Acton sewer design at 22,000.
Move to recommend.
All right.
Second.
Katie moved, Janet second. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Item 16, also on consent, transfer station and recycling enterprise budget.
Move to recommend.
Second.
Katie, Janet, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Article 17, ambulance enterprise budget, again, consent.
Move to recommend.
Was that you, Franny?
Yeah.
Franny moved?
Second.
Janet second. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Article 18, consent, I mean, it's consent agenda, the council on aging van enterprise fund authorization to revoke.
Move to recommend.
Okay, Franny, Janet, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Any abstentions? All right, Article 19, consent, transportation enterprise fund.
And just a refresher, this is creating a transportation enterprise fund and also funding the first year, and included in that is $70,000 for the fixer-out service.
I forget Franny.
I'll move to recommend.
Okay, Franny moves to recommend.
Second.
Katie second. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right, Article 20, consent, self-funding program or revolving funds.
Move to recommend.
Janet moves.
Second.
I'm not excited about that one at all.
Franny seconded. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right, and...
21.
I got, I got the notice, I got the notice that Peter's sick, stuck in there, so...
This is the next one.
Exactly. Article 22, non-binding resolution for the senior tax...
No, no, skip over 21. The cultural council.
Oh, okay, sorry, that's why, because I had that thing covering him. Article 21, consent agenda, town board support for the AB Cultural Council.
Move to recommend.
Second.
All right, Janet, Katie, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right. Article 22, non-binding resolution, senior tax relief.
Move to recommend.
All right, Franny moves to recommend.
Second.
Katie second. Any discussion? All those in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Article 23, non-binding resolution, pay-as-you-throw or S.M.A.R.T., trash.
So, I think this is worth a bit of discussion, you know, just to make sure we're all on the same page and still feeling good about going forward. I know at the public forum that many of us attended, there were a lot of people that got up and had concerns and spoke in opposition to this. I would say that I think, I know there were quite a few people there in support, but felt like they didn't want to speak, they were trying to let people kind of, you know, ask the questions and get issues out there. So, while I think that it will be, I don't think it's, I know it won't be unanimously supported, I still feel positive that with a lot of hard work, we can get people out to understand the issues and really make sure that people get what this program is about and support it at town meeting. I know that Cory's working on, as you mentioned, some alternative pricing or options to try to figure out, you know, how to make this work for seniors. I think it will work for a lot of seniors. I think there just needs to be a lot of education. I know Green Acton and Zero Waste are working very hard on that. I've had about, like, 300 emails coming back and forth.
A day.
Yeah, exactly, which is great, and they're working really hard, and I'm, you know, meeting with some folks starting this weekend to get slides ready, so there'll be a lot of work put into that and into getting out the vote, but just, you know, there were concerns. I think somebody might be expressing some of those in a moment, not to, you know, make guesses about Herman. So, just wanted to make sure that everybody was kind of still on the same page and willing to do this this year, because obviously, the consequence is that if it failed this year, it's not going to come up for at least another 10 years. So, you've got to feel confident that we can make it happen.
And I'm going to continue to subsidize all those slobs.
Right.
Keep throwing all the recyclable stuff into the general trash section, you know, while I show my two tiny bags every three weeks. Anyhow, so...
Janet's on board.
Yeah, 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 but I said nothing at that workshop the other day. I was seething in my seat. I was surrounded by people who were, you know, but I restrained myself.
I still want to support it. I think it will work to reduce trash and make people responsible in the same way we are for the amount of electricity or gas we use, but I am concerned about, I want to make sure that seniors are helped as much as possible, so, I, because I have heard concerns, and I do want to see that as part of it, but I'm assuming in voting for it, as long as nobody convinces me otherwise, I will vote for it, but with the assumption that there will be a few changes from Cory.
Well, we would vote those changes later. I mean, it's going to come back before the board anyways, the final kind of details I mean, it's going to come back before the board anyways, the final kind of details and the actual, yeah, how the, how the.
And it's a non-binding.
Right. And I've had questions about, you know, well, what if it doesn't quite pass, you know, and that'll be a question for the future board after town meeting, but for now, you know, and so I will say thank you for, you know, all reiterating your support, and like I said, I think it's going to take a lot of effort to get people educated and out there, so I just, you know, hope that you'll, you'll help in those get out the vote efforts in the next few weeks.
Yeah, I think it's important to see how hard change is for people and also seeing seniors in my life, very extreme seniors, how hard it is in certain special trash needs that I can imagine, the challenges.
I think you've waited them out, Herman.
You did say, "Jump up quickly."
I did.
I didn't, I didn't realize you were going to have.
Very sprightly.
I was taking you literally, and I jumped up quickly, and then Katie gave my speech.
I'm prone to that, I'm sorry.
I won't reiterate what Katie said, except to say I agree. The only thing I would add to that is that I would hope that you would consider a deferral. There's some unknown twists and turns at this point, so what you may be recommending or think you recommend might not be what ultimately ends up being the case, given all the research that's being done, and I would encourage a deferral recommendation.
So I'm going to say the reason I don't encourage a deferral only is that, again, you know, that this doesn't include kind of the details and what the pay-as-you-throw, how exactly it will work. That will happen at a future selectmen meeting after town meeting, but it really is just, I think, supporting the idea of switching to pay-as-you-throw in general, and I'd like to have that vote and support going into the Legal and Voters War and Article Meeting.
And I happen to agree with that. I think that people who read the warrant to see what the position is from the board of Selectmen, from the FinCom, because they see us as the experts, so they're looking for us to give them, in many cases, some guidance they don't necessarily know. I think the entire board of selectmen has supported pay-as-you-throw as it's moved kind of through the process, so I would say that we're probably more inclined to recommend as opposed to defer, but I can appreciate what you're saying, and so just by the time we get to that, it's already going to be in print. Herman?
I'm sorry, I actually thought you'd agree with me, so I sat down. So I would just say there was one question I asked Cory, to which he answered, "We haven't thought of that yet. We'll look into it," and that's the example that I was trying to allude to, one such example, aside from the cost to seniors, and that is, there is trash out there that's not recyclable. It exists, probably most of it in my garage, or my, or my Alcat part of my basement, and you have to give me that, I'm sure nobody would really argue with that statement, and I asked Cory, "What do you do with trash that is not recyclable but won't fit into a 30-gallon bag?" His answer was, "I have to find out what other towns do. We hadn't thought of that yet." So unless he's thought of it and unless you can answer that question, having, as a result of his analysis, that's the kind of thing I was alluding to. There are just some things that haven't, that aren't known, and there are, there's going, I think, I hope, there's going to be an adjustment to the cost as regards seniors anyway. There's going to have to be plans for people who have debris, I'll call it, you know, when you do a project around the house and you get debris that's not recyclable, and you don't want to spend $50,000 to get rid of it at the transfer station. So I think there is enough out there that's unknown that you could justify a deferral.
I think in terms of kind of the weird stuff that ends up in your garage, I mean, a lot of communities, Concord, for example, has a drop-off date twice a year, once in the spring, once in the fall, where you kind of bring all this stuff, and it's pretty reasonable. I mean, you get rid of a lot of stuff for 25 bucks, it's on a Saturday, they have all different bins for metals, for furniture, for whatever, and, you know, that's what a lot of communities do, that you kind of stir up your junk and you get rid of it twice a year.
And I think the other thing we had talked about was, you know, pay for the pickup truck, you know, like you can have kind of a truckload come in, so if you've got a big project like that, and I think that's something we already have and we're considering continuing, but, you know, again, just reading, not all of those questions are necessarily going to be worked out prior to this vote and prior to town meeting, because those are some of the things that are going to happen after we vote on this non-binding resolution. So I do think that it's worth, and I think most of the boards, I don't need to argue about this, is ready to recommend.
I had the same question, actually, about the stuff, because the other pile of stuff is in my basement, it's not in your garage, Herman, and Jim Snyder Grant was saying.
I think you should bring it over to Herman's basement.
Herman, we're just going to tell everybody to drive it over here.
Get a dumpster over there.
I'll put it into a bunch of plastic bags and bring it to your house. No, I, Jim Snyder Grant said, you know, people should get dumpsters, as you said, but the fact of the matter is, people like me don't get rid of stuff all at once. I mean, that's a major project, especially for a senior who might be, have saved up things over the years and might be hurried to move it out, and so you might not want always to get a dumpster, so I'm not sure that has worked out, but I still don't want to defer. I still would want to show support for it and have faith that we will work out details, because we're all on the same boat. It's not as though, you know, people have neat trash and don't collect those strange things that don't fit into bags.
Sure.
Joe Andolfi, 16 Hemlock Lane. One of the common misconceptions with pay-as-you-throw or smart programs is that things necessarily change in terms of how one disposes of their trash. It really doesn't. Much of the items that folks are talking about, wood, construction debris, commercial debris from home, they're not allowed now in most dumps or landfills of transfer station. They're part of the Commonwealth's Waste Ban. So many of those objects that we have to go to different lengths to get rid of, whether, this past weekend, I got rid of an old dehumidifier, it cost me $25, to put it in the Freon pile at the transfer station. There's also the, and I got rid of a lot of CFL bulbs, CFL bulbs that I've had, that even though they're supposed to last a lifetime, have broken on me.
You've got a shorter lifetime than, yeah.
And there's a place to put those. So wood, for instance, we've heard a lot of concern about wood. Wood is not allowed to be thrown away unless it's absolutely clean wood, and then it can be put in through a chipper pile, but it's very hard to determine just how clean wood is. So yes, there are challenges. I'm not saying there aren't, but we have the metal pile at the transfer station, we have the Freon section, we have various sections, and there is even, because I just had to have some patio work done, and I contacted Cory for some patio debris that I just couldn't use, they weren't usable pieces, they're accepted at the transfer station as well. So when it comes down to it, again, it takes a little bit of effort, but there's very little that we can't dispose of in there, and whether you use a town, official town, smart, a pay-as-you-throw bag, or a Glad bag, or a Hefty bag, or a Costco bag, it doesn't change. Thank you.
Thank you.
Great, I'm going to move to recommend.
Quick, before anyone else gets up.
Exactly. Nobody else is as sprightly as Herman.
Second, second, second.
All right, we had, Katie, Katie is voting to recommend, Janet second. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right. Community Preservation Program, Article 24.
Are we doing this as a lump? I know in the past years, we've taken some. Individually, but then the moderator doesn't.
I think we have to take them one by one.
He doesn't, he doesn't take them.
Because they're each listed.
I know, but when we do the vote at town meeting.
I know, it's all, it's all or nothing.
Right.
But they can, the CPC can withdraw an item.
True.
So that's, so if it looks like the discussion at town meeting is, "Why are we doing this?" They have the option of reducing the amount that they're using.
Well, then we could revote our recommendation, or if something's held, we could vote that specifically then.
Do you have a particular?
No, I would vote them all as a lump, yeah. Yes, sir.
See, you're going to have to, you know, if you tell both of them, switch seats quick. Just quick, a citizen can get up and say, "I'd like to hold, to take away, you know, item J, G, whatever."
Yep.
They can do that. What you cannot do is add an item.
Correct.
Okay, so, yes, you can, you go down these and see if anybody wants to make a motion to remove item K, whatever that is, and then you can vote to do that, so it is an individual subject.
At on-town meeting for you.
But we could then just, I think that's what we did last year when one was held, we then caucused real quickly and voted on that, and I think even when the moderator, somebody held one, it got a little confusing, because then he was going to still do them all's consent, so they needed to have then made a motion. I don't know that any of these are incredibly controversial anyways, so now that this conversation has saved time, in the manner of saving time, I think we could.
Can I just, can I just move to recommend items A through N in the CP?
You can, and if somebody seconds it, we're.
Second, CP, P, Level 3, 24, yeah, second.
Okay, we had Janet recommend, Katie second. What was that? It's, they're doing the entire slate that's on 24, so it's 24A, 24B, 1B, 2C, D.
We're just doing them all together, Lisa, that's why, that's what I'm saying.
All the way through N.
Doesn't Nancy?
Correct?
Yeah.
A through N. All right, any more discussion? The only thing I would like to say, I was a little concerned that there were, there were projects that didn't get voted on, but this is the advantage of the CPC being a separate entity than we are, because there's several projects on here that are private residents or private companies in town that are receiving CPC funds, so I think that there may be some opposition to that on-town floor. So I just, I mention that because that's a possibility, but no other discussion? All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right, so that's a recommend on Article 24, A through N. A through N. All right. Article 25, Amend Previous Authorization, Mr. Manager.
Well, 25, 26, and 27 are related. 25 and 26 are to repurpose, two old articles for cemetery use to be used towards the purchase of the 66 to 68 Harris Street, which is the former Fisheries and Wildlife building. I believe the value of those two articles is about $181,000, and the other piece, Article 27, would be to do a land swap with some landlocked town property that actually bought other state property for the delta in the value of the project. I will point out that because our appraisal of that town-owned property is three years old, and in talking with Senator Eldredge's office, we are redoing the appraisal right now to get it more updated, so hopefully maybe it has gone up since we did it last, but that's the concept, those two articles repurposed, and then the value of the town-owned property being swapped to Fisheries and Wildlife for the delta to acquire Harris Street for primarily the storage building that's there that's very similar to the building they wanted to build in the cemetery but did not have the funds to do.
Okay, question, Katie?
If the value does go up, presumably we would be paying less monetarily than to Fish and Wildlife.
Well, we were a little short between the three sources, so that's why I'm hoping.
Okay, so, okay. I was just going to ask what we can do with the extra.
If, in fact, there was required extra, just take it out of free cash, like if it's $10,000 short or something like that.
We have to see the appraisal and make that determination.
We're just shakesty bad.
Any other questions or comments? The only thing I would mention is that the landlocked piece of property, which is shown on the map, that would become part of the state property, the only thing that's different in the town of Acton, town of Acton does not allow hunting anywhere on its, on its property, the state does, so just, it's, you know, they use it to thin deer herds and things like that, so just more for people's awareness than anything else. Did we already get a motion, too?
No.
No?
We haven't done Articles 25 and.
25, 26, and 27, since they're all linked.
They're all together.
Yeah.
Move to approve Articles, or recommend Articles 25, 26, and 27.
Okay, Katie recommends approval on all three.
Second.
Janet seconds. Any more discussion? All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right. Article 28, Land Acquisition, Piper Road, the McGoon property.
I would recommend for both 28 and 29 to defer until town meeting. We have not received an appraisal on either property at the moment, and therefore not have had a discussion with the property owners in either parcel.
Move to defer 28 and 29.
Second.
Okay, we had Janet move and Katie second. All those in, all those appro, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Any against? Any abstentions? You would think after saying it five thousand times.
I was going to say, I think you've hit the wall of saying it.
It would like fall off my tongue here. Maybe you can just do ditto next time. All right, Amend Zoning Map, Article 30, this is a two-thirds vote article because it's zoning. Brookside Shops, changing the Brookside Shops from R8 to a limited commercial.
Move to recommend.
Second.
All right, we have Janet, Katie. Any questions, comments? All right, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Article 31, which is a consent item, Amend Town Bylaws, Police Details.
This article was drafted by council primarily because of police chief's concern that utilities, particularly N-Star, has refused to pay police details during some of the storms we had, and so this bylaw would require anybody working in town right of way to notify the police chief. He would determine whether a detail was required or not, and that, that by informing the chief of that, you've obligated, the entity has obligated themselves to pay our prevailing wage, so to speak, for the detail work. So this, this is in essence, response to some of the money that some of our utilities have not been paying us, and other towns as well, not just us.
Move to recommend.
Okay, we have, we have a motion.
Second.
And we have a second. Any discussion? I would, I would say one thing, we should have clear, concise rules as to when they do and when they don't.
That's part of actually, the bylaw would be that the chief has to develop those rules.
Okay. Okay, and in that case, any other questions, comments? All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right, Article 32, Also Consent, Amend Kennel License Fee Structure.
Move to recommend.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Katie and Franny, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, Article 33, Also Consent, Accept Street, Braybrook Road, which we heard earlier this evening. It's essentially extending the, a public road for another 55 feet or so.
No, longer.
I don't remember the exact, but it's.
Two or something, but, yeah, move to recommend.
Okay, we have Janet move to recommend.
Second.
We have Katie second. Any discussion? All those in favor, indicate by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right, Article 34, Consent, Accept Sidewalk Easement, Great Road.
Move to recommend.
Second.
Okay, we had Katie and Franny. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right. Article 35, Consent, Highway Reimbursement Program or Chapter 90. program, or Chapter 90.
Move to recommend.
Second.
All right, we have Katie, Franny. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
She had said aye.
Late aye?
Mm-hmm.
Any abstentions? All right, that's Carrie's. Article 36, also a consent item, insurance proceeds.
Move to recommend.
All right, Franny moves to recommend.
Second.
Janet seconds. Don't fall down on the job, boy. All right, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Article 37, gifts or grants.
Move to recommend.
Janet moves to recommend. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, we have Fran, I mean, Katie.
You had been doing so well.
All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, Article 38, federal and state reimbursement aid.
Move to recommend.
All right, we have joint effort of move to recommend from my right. Katie, will you second?
Second on the left.
You pick. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Article 39, also consent, performance bonds.
Move to recommend. Second.
All right, Janet, Katie, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Article 40, sale of foreclosed properties.
Move to recommend. Second.
All right, Janet, Katie, all those in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? And Article 41, elderly tax relief, consent.
I just wanted to point out that we have been accepting this every year for a long time. The law has now changed, so once we accept this this year, we don't have to do it again.
Oh.
All right, good news flies.
Move to recommend. Second.
Franny, Katie, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions?
And Mr. Chair, just, I had noticed, and I just texted Mark, that I think we missed one article, and that, as you recall, like, two or three years ago, we had created through a special act, an energy efficiency revolving fund that either energy savings or energy grants went into. It had been proposed that $60,000 be appropriated out of that revolving fund towards LED streetlight replacement. So, we missed it, it should be on the warrants, that was part of kind of our capital plan from other sources.
So do we want to call it Article X, or?
Well, we'll put it in an appropriate place, I just want to make the board aware of it, and if you want to take a position on it now while we work out the details.
We'll take a position on it now, it's pretty straightforward.
Move to recommend.
All right, Janet moves to recommend. Any, do we have a second?
Second.
Katie seconds. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right. Just let us know what article number it is.
32.
All right.
It's the Energy Efficiency Revolving Fund, we created by a special act like two or three years ago, town meeting authorized the filing of the act.
Okay. I lost my agenda here. Come on. Okay, Smera, item five, Central Middlesex Emergency Response Agency request for 10% increase. Mr. Manager?
Yes, I had attended the Smera Board Meeting approximately two weeks ago, and as I mentioned in my report, Smera was, was basically founded about five years ago when Emerson Hospital decided to get out the advanced life support business, and, you know, left a lot of the communities in the area in a lurch, because most of us did not have advanced life support, you know, in-house. So, Smera was formed kind of as an intermunicipal agreement that are, I'm not gonna even try to remember all the towns' names, but pretty much everyone around here, except right now Sudbury, Wayland, and Westford, they have their own advanced life support right now.
I think it goes as far south as Weston, doesn't it?
Weston is the furthest limit going that way, correct. Lincoln is in it as well, Carlisle, Concord, et cetera. So, this was founded five years ago, the vendor that was chosen, Pro EMS, basically undertook the operation. They have been operating for five years now without any rate increase, and probably the, in this whole document, the most pertinent one, I think, is, I think it's page six, that is basically a cost analysis for 2014 that shows declining revenue relating to increasing cost per transportation. So, you know, for example, in FY11, when, first year of Smera's operation, they had costs of a little under $1,007,000, had revenue of almost $1,009,000. And FY12, that gap started to close between revenue and expenses, closed more in 13, and in 14, expenses exceeded revenues. Expenses were $1,769, estimated revenue was $1,006,000. So hence, that is where the 10% rate increase has come in. And, you know, since this will be the fifth year of operation, I guess one could look at it as a 2% per year increase. Now, when, when Smera was formed and Pro EMS was chosen, there were a couple of conditions. One, Pro EMS would do all the ambulance billings for all the member communities, so they do our basic life support billing, as well as doing the billing for ALS, which, you know, obviously they receive. So, a 10% rate increase for ALS also means a 10% rate increase for BLS. So, by approving this, that will, in essence, improve our position 10% better in terms of our ambulance fund. At the meeting, all the managers were asked to bring it back to their respected boards and try to, try to get an approval vote by the board by May 1st, with an implementation date of this coming July 1st.
Okay, any questions for the manager? Yes, Katie?
Is there more information on why there's seeing such a drop in, you know, the number of transports? I mean, I think in the bigger picture, that's a good thing in our healthcare system.
Well, I, he didn't, the director of Pro EMS, I don't recall him saying that there has been a drop, but he did mention, for the first two months of this calendar year, the ALS rate has, or the ALS utilization has increased 20%. Obviously, a lot of it probably has to do with weather, auto accidents, et cetera, but has kind of gone up quite a bit in January, February.
Hmm, okay, so my, that number might be a bit better, the 2014 numbers might be a bit better than what we think. But, okay, I would, yeah, I was just wondering why there seemed to be such a percent of a drop.
Any other questions? One question I've got for you, Steve, is the, obviously, we've discussed it at the, at the town meeting has approved the town going forward with ALS. If, in fact, we enter into this, what do we need to give Smera, or however we want to say?
We need to give them six-month notice prior to the beginning of the next fiscal year. So really, it was like this year. So by January 1 of 2016, we would have to give them notice. You know, I've already discussed this with Labor Council, right after town meeting, we need to sit down again with, with the fire union and have a further discussion. My understanding is, the fire local has changed their council since the last go-around, so I'm not sure exactly what that means. But, you know, our intent is probably, end of April, really may start discussing this with the union here.
Okay. I would entertain a motion of some sort.
Move to approve the request for a 10% increase in the Smera.
Second.
Okay, we had Katie and Franny. Any more discussion? All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you, Steve. All right, next one up is 495 Metro Partnership Draft Letter to Municipalities, a voluntary stipend.
Yeah, there's, there's a draft letter in the packet, which actually has been finalized, and is supposed to be going out. I had actually sent to the board members via email a copy of the spreadsheet that's sort of dated. It's the fiscal 15 budget for 495 Metro West Partnership, just to give you an idea of where, what their funding is like. I mean, the bulk of their funding, they have a budget of, what, $200,000, $300,000, of which most of, half of it is personnel, it's two people who do a whole lot of work for the organization and the 34, and now 35 member communities. And the bulk of their funding comes from private sector, from corporate sponsorships. They have been getting grants from the state, they had, they had a legislative, sort of, an earmark, but that has kind of disappeared, and.
Much like most of the grants.
So, and they have never, what they tip, they typically don't charge admission and to events, and so, and they, they just started to throw around the idea of charging member communities a really nominal amount. Now, there are some communities that are very small, much smaller than we are, but they thought, well, $500 would be enough that if 34, well, the 34 communities, now 35 gave, they, that would give them $17,000, and that's a lot for them, because they stretch the dollar pretty far. I don't know if every community is going to give, that's already been a discussion on the Board of Directors, because, you know, there's a sense of fairness, and the idea was that, well, if some communities are members but don't want to pay for what they get, they get to go out to all these workshops, they, the, the organization has speakers, including like the governor and the gubernatorial candidates, and they have all these people, and EPA came to do its preview of the new stormwater management permit before EPA formally started doing the dog and pony show across the state. So we got the word before everybody else did. So they do a lot of stuff that is actually very helpful, and I've actually been to number their programs. But the idea is if some communities don't want to voluntarily pay the 500, that the organization might start charging for them to be able to attend. Probably not a lot, but, but that's, basically, they are saying calendar year 15, so it's up to a community that's interested whether they want to stick it in the current fiscal year if they're on a, on a July to June count, a year, or stick it into the next fiscal year, if that's easier. But whatever communities would be willing to do.
Okay.
But I'm sorry that the, the spreadsheet didn't, and I was getting some information from, from the administrator via phone.
I would like to say that in, in terms of 495 Metro West Partnership, they have been very supportive of our Crosstown Connect, and have sent letters of support to the Challenge Innovation Grant Body and several other granting authorities in support of what we've been doing. So, they do good work, they are always active participants, and, and so I'm, inclined to recommend that we go ahead and do what they're asking, so.
I was gonna say the same thing. Jessica Strunkin from, who is one of the employees, is almost always at our, either local transportation meetings or magic meetings, and it's been, it's been very helpful.
All right, so.
I think, I think probably what we need to do is just authorize the town manager. I, Mr. Manager, I don't know if you want me to have Paul Matthews at 495 Metro West send you an invoice, so you have something to respond to.
I think that would be the best.
Yeah, I'll just ask him to email it, so that you have that to respond to. Okay, just authorize the town manager to take care of that.
Do we need a motion to do it? I mean, do we need a vote?
Yeah, I think we should have a.
Well, that would be good. I thought you were gonna make a motion.
Oh, okay, fine, I thought, well, yeah, usually would, okay. I move that we authorize the town manager to make the $500 voluntary payment to the 495 Metro West Partnership sometime in calendar year 2015, but.
Pending invoice.
Yeah.
Second.
Okay, Janet, Katie, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right. Next up is consent, but I'm looking for... We seem to have another document.
Who is this? Oh, this is.
Is it in consent? I didn't notice it.
Oh, this is, yeah, this is the swap of forest land from.
Right, right, no, I know what it is. It's, oh, okay, all right, it's on consent, not a problem. Okay, so, let me go through the consent calendar, and when we get to anything that you're interested in holding, please say hold, and we'll go back and figure out what the issue is, all right? Item number seven on the consent agenda is request for disposal of obsolete items for Acton Memorial Library. Item eight, board to accept vote from the 2012 Annual Town Meeting, land swap on Quarry Road, municipal and forest land. Number nine, committee appointment, Marge Kennedy, Associate Member, Acton Nursing Service Task Force. Number 10, request for use of gift, Asabet River Rail Trail, Planning Department is a request to help funds for acquisition totaling $10,000 from the Asabet River Rail Trail easements from the gift account, 3082. Item 11, accept gift, Recreation Department, Levine Piero Law, $250 in support of production costs for the summer concert series. Now, item 12, accept gift, Recreation Department, Cambridge Savings Bank, $3,400 to support production costs of the summer concert series. Item 13, accept product donation value, Recreation Department, Dunkin' Donuts, enclosed donation, 450 cups of hot chocolate and supplies to support the, the three-day, did you want to hold this?
No, I was just asking where it was.
All right, one, item 14, one-day alcoholic beverage license, Bradley Liquors, at Narrow Park on two days, July 10th and July 31st. Item 15, approval of meeting minutes and executive session, March 24, 2014. Item 16, request for change of sales hours, beer and wine license, Donlin Supermarket, to reflect their regular hours. Item 17, commit reappointment, Catherine F. Arnold, Board of Register Voters, registered voters or registrar voters? Register, anyway. All right, well, item 18, Acton Women's Club, request for temporary sign placement.
Hold.
Hold, all right. And item 19, Gold Award Ceremony, Girl Scout Troop, 72,001, Nicole Benson, March 15. What was that? And Katie is doing that, did you get that?
We had a secret woman's email.
Gonna have the secret handshake. All right, who held? Who was the holder?
You got one more, you have one more to read.
Oh, you have an old version here.
I'm sorry. Item 20, committee appointment, Barat Shah for Planning Board. Thank you. Yeah, 'cause I don't have it. I got the one that was in the pack. All right, that's Barat Shah. Okay, yes, sir. What's your, what's your question?
You want to hold?
You want to hold that?
I just want to say his name is spelt wrong, it's S-H-A-H.
Oh, S-H-A-H?
Yeah.
Doesn't matter if it's actually, it's up here.
Okay. Okay.
Okay, so we're not gonna hold that anymore, right? Thank you. Yes, Rob?
I was wondering why on 18, the request for a temporary sign comes through the selectmen?
Because it's actually on the town common.
Yeah?
The town common is not just the triangle, the town common actually goes almost up to the front door of every property that's on Main Street between here and Nagog Road.
The reason for asking is the paragraph 710.8 says, "No temporary or special event sign shall be erected without a sign permit issued by the officer of the zoning enforcement officer."
And, and in fact, they still have to go through that, but because it's on the town common, the Board of Selectmen have historically restricted what will go on the town common, particularly on the triangle. So that's why it passes through us. But they still have to meet the requirements of the no more than 15 days per year of temporary sign placement through the ZOE. Okay?
Move to approve consent.
Or ZOE?
Move to approve, move to approve consent agenda items 7 through 20.
Move to approve, move to approve consent agenda items seven through 20.
Second.
Okay, we have Katie and Franny. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? All right, now we go on to our final item of the night, which is select memored boards.
Okay, the Acton Memorial Library Board of Trustees met, they're making good progress on updating the job descriptions for all the various positions at the library as per their long-range plan goal, and the contractors that they've hired are continuing their work on the building's facilities assessment. ALG met, but everybody was there. The Acton Boxborough Regional School Committee met, and I would say the big thing of interest for us out of that was the superintendent presented on his entry report, which he's been working on for, well, since being hired, and that is available on the school committee website. I know it's for sure in their packet, it might be somewhere else on there, but I encourage people to, to sort of read through that. It's, you know, not the final step in this process, but he's written up a lot of interesting stuff about the meetings he's had and the people he's met with, and kind of what he's seeing in the community. Morrison Farm Committee did not meet, but I had a discussion with Marion Ashton, Tom Tidman, and Tori Byer from the Historical Commission, just to sort of talk about some of their thoughts relating to the parking and what to do about parking there, that previously have CPC funds for that, but figuring out the logistics of it. So, we kind of went over that, and then Morrison Farm Committee is gonna be meeting pretty soon. Oh, and Bruce Ringwall was there as well. The Recreation Commission met, they, we had that complaint at our last meeting about the plowing at Narrow, at the Narrow Walking Trail, and I think perhaps the same gentleman and maybe others also, I guess, submitted some complaints to Senator Eldridge's office, and so he had reached out to the Recreation Department, and they ended up using some of their NARA staff and paid them overtime to plow the walk, walking trail. And just to note that a lot of those, their, I mean, their facilities crew end up becoming like highway crew during storm emergencies, and as Kathy mentioned, the meeting, I mean, the Narrow Walking Trail is pretty much the lowest on the priority of things to get done, because we need to get the roads that people actually have to be undone first.
Plus, it's a big circle.
Plus, it's a, walk around a circle about sidewalks. They also discussed some of the issues around NARA safety, particularly in light of the fact that the safety gates that they had recommended were not approved for CPA funding this year. In fact, none of the recreation projects were approved for the CPA, which was a bit.
No, because didn't they approve the?
So, that's natural resources.
The well, oh.
Yeah, but not recreation, yeah, so the speed park and other things. Yeah, which we had, you know, ranked those pretty highly, and I guess, I don't know, there were some comments that our rankings aren't taken very seriously, which anyways, worth a, worth a conversation for next year. Yeah, so, there were just some discussions about other things that they could do to try to mitigate some of the safety issues there, and they're also considering the idea of kind of a part-time park ranger position, so they're gonna be working some more on that. And then I also was one of the speakers at the Pay As You Throw Forum, which we have already discussed, and that's it.
Okay, thank you. Janet?
I have a question, was there any discussion about the Morrison House? What, the Morrison Farm Committee was supposed to make a recommendation to us about what they thought should happen with the house.
So, this wasn't the actual Morrison Farm Committee?
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, so I know they are meeting, I can't remember, there was a doodle sent down.
The park ranger, well, of course, that's for NARA, but, you know, if you could have general recreational areas, it would be nice.
Well, they talked about using the park ranger at, you know, more, it would probably be more than just NARA, somebody that could potentially kind of be walking around there, as well as maybe at the Arboretum and some other areas. So, I mean, it seems like it's in kind of the initial ideas, and they're looking at, I don't know that there are other communities that actually do this, but they're looking into, you know, other people that have park rangers, national parks and things, but, you know.
Maybe the person would like, would like to live at Morrison Farmhouse anyhow.
Yeah, so anyways, but Morrison Farm Committee will be meeting.
Yeah, we'd already noted to Marion Ashton, who's the chair, that they, they owed us that from last year, and so she said that they would in fact address that this year, so.
Yeah, so I think we're having a meeting, again, I can't remember, but that's happening.
I keep driving by, and I think, oh gee.
Yeah, no, I think the same thing.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, Cultural Council is meeting on Wednesday, so it's gonna conflict with our three boards meeting. Finn Combs meeting tomorrow night, they're going to be discussing the CPC recommendations as well as doing ALG and town meeting prep. The Design Review Board finally, they met on the 4th, and they finalized their comments about the revised charge, and they've sent it to me, but I've now forwarded their comments to the Planning Director, I don't know when he'll have time to look at them, but I wanted, they had some things they wanted to add, and it has to do with the sort of subdivisions, and I wanted to get his, have him remind me of what the limitations are on the authority there. The Water Resources Advisory Committee is meeting tomorrow, and probably will be discussing feedback from the departments and town council about the draft stormwater by law, so, in any event, the Zoning Board of Appeals this morning, well, they started hearing a week ago on Monday night, and it continued at nine o'clock this morning, which is kind of unusual regarding the Walker Realty Next Gen Daycare remand case. Mr. Walker is not backing off of the 19,000 net square footage, and basically, Next Gen asserts that larger facilities are necessary because Next Gen goes beyond the state minimum square footage and adds sometimes facilities such as onsite laundry. They said that the new buildings they're putting up are 21,000 to 27,000 square feet, and that at least one of their 12,000 square foot buildings was an existing one that they moved into, and it's slated for demolition and replacement. This morning's discussions focused on the 35% open space requirement and the zoning by law, which is a somewhat lesser concern than some of the other issues, also focused on traffic concerns, which are the bigger issues. Mr. Walker was present with, I guess, new counsel, at least according to our town council, it's fairly new attorneys, because his former attorney was ill, and I think had to stop practicing, but anyhow, the zoning enforcement officer was there, town council, Nina was there, and the town's engineering consultant, Rich Neggie, was present. The zoning board appeals was aiming not just to sort of make a decision, but to provide the land court with some guidance. So, what they decided is that they don't approve, the plan is presented with a 19,000 net floor area, they would waive the 35% open space requirement as to the proposed playground, but not as to the shed. The new plan has open space at 21%, if omitting the playground, because it doesn't count as open space, but that contrasts with 31% open space under the prior plan, which had the playground in a slightly different arrangement, but not the shed anyhow. But they were prepared, they said, okay, the playground, fine, it's, it's okay with them. Two of the three members of the ZBA would waive the zoning by law 2,500 square foot net floor area limitation for a plan proposing a building of 12,500 square feet. The third one would, well, all of them would waive that, the square foot net floor area limitation for a plan proposing a building of 5,000 square feet. Basically, two of them were prepared to compromise with 12,500, the third one said, no, not more than 5,000 square foot, and all of them wanted, wanted to sort of endorse the proposed left turn lane, which is an improvement, whatever size building, so anyhow, they would all require the left turn lane into the facility for a project involving a building of 5,000 square feet or larger. WR Grace in Concord, on the 26th of February, I've already told the town manager about this, I had a telephone conversation with Carmen Reese, who's on the Concord Board of Selectmen, about the latest developments or lack of developments in the town's proposed acquisition of the WR Grace land in Concord. The negotiations failed, this was actually written up in the Concord Monitor, town manager, I guess, read it, but negotiations have failed, so the town is now proposing to acquire the property by eminent domain, they would have to pay market value, so potentially it could cost more than the appraised value, which last was $1.2 million. And it's proposed for special town meeting within their upcoming annual town meeting. There were two issues of contention, one had to do with indemnification by WR Grace for hidden problems that might come to light, Grace said for three years, up to $100,000, and then after that, Concord could have to contribute. WR Grace also was proposing a road connecting the Acton WR Grace land to Knox Trail and crossing Concord. The Concord portion of the land, Concord was supposed to accept it as a public road, Concord said, we're fine with the private road, but not a public road. And finally, Grace kind of wanted to control Concord's communications with the EPA, which was not okay. There are some other issues Concord has to deal with, there's no water supply on the Grace land, they can't put down a well, and the, the prior appraisal also didn't reflect the lack of a water supply. The Water District has a bylaw that precludes its supplying water outside of the district absent some sort of extenuating circumstances, basically has to serve the district's interests. The alternative for Concord is gonna be running a pipe under the river, which will be expensive, involve some complicated permitting, and there's also some concern about stirring up some sort of deposits. The AB school system has been in touch with the town about possibly using a portion of the WR Grace site for school buses, so I think that there, I don't know, I talked with the town manager about this, I don't know if you'll have, start having weekly lunches with the superintendent or something, or there'll be some sort of symbiosis. I think we do need to kind of work on our relationship with the Water District anyway, but, there are all these, but, maybe, maybe there's something that could work out. I went to the Douglas Reed Aloud program last Friday, the theme was Dr. Seuss, the town manager was there, and also ran into.
Wait a minute, how come you got to go? We didn't even get a notice.
Oh, you weren't on the email list?
Go every year.
Well, we, we got it, I don't know.
One way, Janice.
They like us.
I don't know, we were on the special list, I guess, I don't know.
Douglas PTO is watching.
Special heads.
Yeah, but I thought, I thought people just were bailing, I had, I had to do four classes, I had to do.
No, I did it last year.
Two, two third grade classes and a kindergarten class, okay, well, I'll break, I'll, you know, I'll go. No, I'll write, but it was, it was a lot of fun, and then, of course, Deputy Police Chief Burrows shows up, you know, in his regalia, and, and I, you know, I made a comment, oh gosh, he looks so smart, and he says, don't you remember we said last year that it was unfair that I had this really spiffy uniform? And I said, yep, and that's the way I still, still felt, but anyhow, it was a lot of fun. Acton Chinese Language School had their New Year celebration on the first, Happy Year of the Sheep, and the quarterly board meeting of the Metro, the 495 Metro West Partnership was on the 3rd. Grafton is gonna be the 35 member, most of these, these towns, they've kind of surrounded 495.
495, yeah.
And in Grafton, it's been involved in some other projects involving other 495 members, but they talked about their proposed municipal stipend, their annual reception and awards, sort of ceremony on the 1st of April, which will be at Quest Diagnostics in Marlboro. The private sector award will go to the president and CEO of something called Atlantic Management, and the public sector award will go to a former Framingham Selectman, and you may recall that Doug Hallie received the public sector award, I think it was last year.
Yep.
Their annual State House Day is April 14th, in the middle of the day, they'll hear from Senate President Stanley Rosenberg and Senate Ways and Means Chairman Karen Spolka, as well as all of the Beacon Hill delegation from the partnership communities. And then a number of us went to Representative Atkins' district meeting on Friday. I don't know if you're gonna cover that.
I was, but.
Okay, good, I'm gonna, I don't want to talk anymore. And then, and then the League, the League of Women Voters Civics B was on Sunday, Peter and Franny and I were there, and there were, there was a lot of energy, tough questions, I have to say, first round questions, I thought, oh my gosh, but it was a great time, great pizza, and Mr. Mullins' team won again.
Again.
And.
He pays some of the.
He does, he does. He's the man who works for a bank.
I think, no, I think, no, I think that, like, I think Sahana thinks that it's, it's bill, it's, he's just really, yeah, sure.
He's got total recall for useless stuff.
He takes it seriously, he's going for the record, he already has it probably, I mean, he's got it for the three years anyhow, and then I'll let Franny talk about the Diversity Coalition meeting today, because I missed all the 10 minutes of it, because I was at the Zoning Board of Appeals.
Okay, Franny, you're up. Good segue.
Peter was also at the Civics B.
Infecting all the kids, right now.
And he, he actually.
I mentioned him.
He probably caught it there. Oh, I didn't hear.
I mentioned Peter.
Oh, okay.
He finished, and he was in the top three.
Yes. I, that was my, one of the hardest things about deciding to become a selectman, was the fear about the Civics B, so I survived with my ego unscathed, because they now have set it up for all the adults listening who have wanted to be in it, where you don't have to really stand out, you know, you're working with a team.
I know what it feels like.
You have to withstand the judgment of the kids.
Oh, I had a friendly group of kids. So, the Council on Aging Board met, Mary Lou Rapucci gave her resignation, she's now working in recreation and not at the Senior Center. Her next Friday, must be this Friday, or maybe last Friday, it was her last day, no, on March 13th at 12:30 PM, she's being appreciated there, and they'll be listing the staff assistant position. United Way survey was announced there, and there was interest for, to make sure that there was a paper version and the people that didn't have the web would have a way to fill it out. This is a needs survey that we're hoping that people all over town will fill out, put on by the Acton Boxborough United Way. The Council on Aging members have been visiting senior centers to support the Senior Center Study Committee, and so that's interesting to hear about the variety. And Steve Barran's memorial is Sunday, the 15th, at 1:00 PM at Nagog Clubhouse, 102 Non-Set Path. In discussing the Acton Nursing Service, people on the Council on Aging Board felt that the senior newsletter would be a good place for health tips as a way to raise the awareness of the Acton Nursing Service. They also talked about whether to host a presentation on Lexington at Home, which is a community-wide support system, a way to stay at home longer and support, have, support other seniors, but they decided not to do a presentation right now, but they think that Acton 2020 should look into that. And they also recognized Judy Peters for a great new website, which is www actuencoa.com. That's actuencoa.com. There was a Regional Coordinating Council meeting of, this is the transportation subgroup that, they're loosely edged, and they're all around the state, and our Regional Coordinating Council had about transportation and mobility, met at Maynard's Council on Aging, which is in the golf course, it's really cool. The Assistant Town Manager of Maynard jokes that, you know, it's the only Council on Aging that has a bar, and a, and a, because it's in the, it's in the.
Don't give our seniors any ideas.
It's, no, it's, it's in the, and it has a fireplace, which interested me more, and it's on the golf course, looked like beautiful cross-country skiing out there, gave me, has always given me tourism ideas. Anyway, sort of an interesting place for the Council on Aging, because it's a club, I guess it's a country club also. Yeah, okay. It was a very invigorating meeting, and there were people from various towns, and the Human Services Transportation Office, Minuteman Arc, and from special ed and schools, the Director of Pupil Services was there, were working on subcommittees to take on some of the topics that people are passionate about, working on improving transportation, and things like travel training, student transportation issues. It sort of felt like a vibrant meeting the way Minuteman Regional used to, where people from different towns and agencies connect and are able to work together on transportation solutions. On transportation also, Doug Hallie and I are about to meet with Selina Shaw from the Town Administrator of Boxborough to talk about how Boxborough can get on the Minuteman Plan. They've been asking for a long time how they can, what they can give to get what, and so we're, we're working on that, you know, I've heard from, they hear about needs and they're. their Selectmen and town administrator are very interested in seeing what they can do. The Open Space Committee met, talked about the various properties, including the McGoon that we mentioned. I also went to a community neighborhood meeting about that property, you know, there might be some movement to try to work on that from neighbors, and that was interesting. Magic Legislative Breakfast, was I the only Selectman there? Magic had a legislative breakfast, I think that was from, it was on the February twenty-seventh, and our legislators were there, and other ones talking about all things from the Olympics to tourism to transportation funding. I also went to a, I guess it's called an agency review, that Minuteman Senior Services Director Joan Butler held, and that was very useful, and I wanted to remind, I'm taking my position as ambassador, which you automatically become if you do that, and I want to remind people listening that Minuteman Senior Services is considered a no-wrong-door agency, so if you have any question about services you may or may not need, or even if you're out of that region, or you, you just don't know, or you have a disability, if you're senior or you're disability, call Minuteman Senior Services. And they have programs, that we've mentioned before, they have this new program called Minuteman By Your Side, so even if you're not financially eligible for certain services, you can pay to get them, which is very useful. And they have all sorts of classes, healthy living programs, elder protective services they're involved in, one, Still Parenting, a succession series for parents caring for adult children with mental illness, that's gonna be happening from April into May. So there's a lot of things at Minuteman Senior Services, and I'm just looking on their brochure to just see their number, it's in eight-eight-eight-two-two-two-six-one-seven-one.
Or you can reach them through our COA.
And you're saying the Coalition for Diversity met today. We are going to look into setting up a website that, to just review the No Place for Hate as it's coming down, is gonna sort of be replaced by the Acton Boxborough Coalition for Diversity, which has been meeting for a year and a half and had a report that we recently put out, and Janet, and Cynthia Highland are the new chairs of that. Things that we're gonna work on are a website and ways to share about things going on, and we're going to have a couple of films with discussions, and also look into anti-bias discussions. Somebody from Boxborough came today and was very interested in, and has been talking to their police chief, and it would be good to involve our police chief with, it's, in addition to diversity awareness, I wasn't really aware of this, it's a different way of looking at things, is learning about anti-bias. So, they're exciting things with that group, and if anybody listening wants to get involved, they could write to, I believe it's abdiversitycoalition@gmail.com, and it will get to us. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Acton Nursing Service, Services Task Force, Task Force met is creating subcommittees to address issues such as marketing, networking, financing. They have begun compiling some testimonials and working towards identifying specific individuals and/or titles that they should focus their energies on to increase referrals at the physicians' locations. A physician attended to talk about how medical group work referrals. The basic model has changed since the early two thousands from a capitation model to a better outcome quality of care model, which works very well, because A&amp;S, of course, has an excellent record with a top one hundred rating, so that, that should be a perfect way for them to go in and sell their services. Corey had her, her constituent towns last Friday. Part of the discussion reflected nine C cuts and, by the governor and his new budget, House One, that just came out. She indicated that the legislature was unlikely to support the governor's House One for a host of reasons. One reason she, she said was that revenue was down, that could impact Chapter Seventy and Chapter Ninety monies next year, so him promising things that he doesn't have, doesn't make a whole lot of sense, but that's, you know, and I'm doing this compacted, so if there's anything else you can think of. She also talked about funding the MBTA going forward, and briefly, the impact of the Olympics on, on both the region and on transportation specifically. The Metropolitan Planning Organization, the basic discussion this month at the MPO revolved around the rating system that staff uses to prioritize projects within the universe of projects. Currently, they use a numeric system range for things like greenhouse gas, walkability slash biking, congestion, and travel delay, social justice, and regional spending. There was also a discussion on Title Six, Service Equity Analysis Methodology. One of the staff presented a Beck casting study of the Central Outtery Project, commonly known as the Big Dig, which is very interesting. It was interesting to see what the assumptions were made in encouraging federal spending for a project that size, and what the net outcome was. They're beginning their process in evaluating the LRTP, or Long Range Transportation Plan, which is a moving twenty-five-year window for the upcoming year. Crosstown Connect, we met with, a joint meeting with LRTA and MART, discussed the issue of utilizing COA vans purchased by one RTA and used in another. Crosstown Connect would work to combine trips to common locations like Emerson Hospital to increase utilization. Both RTAs were open to and were going to reach out to the state and federal people to determine whether there were any issues that would affect capital financing through fifty-three-ten grants. The most common method of purchasing vehicles today, so, and that is my report.
Motion to adjourn.
We have a motion to adjourn.
Second.
We have a second. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
That's the vote you'll never worry about.